Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to order the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty four special meeting order for the school committee and city council. Sarah, could we have a roll call, please?
President Laflambeau.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Here. Roy.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Ziegros here.
Ariaga.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Uh huh.
Here.
Valkir.
Here.
Crapitz.
Here.
Jumsky.
Here.
Gushane. Labree.
Here.
Man Costello.
Here.
Mayor View.
Here.
Zatella Lopes.
Present.
Russo. Barcello. Present. Dow.
Here.
Parrot.
Present.
Oldfield.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Lamah.
Here.
Gerard.
Here.
Yeah. Bernard's here.
Participating on Zoom this evening will be Councilor Shane Brooks. In compliance with the open meeting law, the city of Chickaby is broadcasting live for future broadcasters on Chickaby TV. Is anyone else in the audience or on Zoom taping this meeting? Seeing none, if everyone could do us a courtesy and mute your cell phones, would it appreciate the event tonight? And I'm going to ask the clerk to read the order and then the mayor will take over the rest of the meeting. We'll take a pledge to the flag. And now we'll say standing for a moment of silence for those who protect us home and abroad. Thank you. I'm going to have the clerk read the order, the special meeting order, and then it'll be turned over to the mayor. Thank you.
Dear President Laflambeau, we have scheduled a joint meeting of the city council and school committee to fill the open school committee at large seat pursuant to the city charter, Article five, section thirty-three. The meeting will be held Monday, November eighteenth, in the city hall auditorium at seven P M. The superintendent of schools is collecting indications of interest from those who have submitted interest in the position and will be inviting them to attend the meeting. We will provide members with information submitted prior to the meeting on Friday, the fifteenth, in the city council packets and the school committee. The only item on the agenda on the agenda will be filling the vacant at-large seat. Let me know if you have any questions. Thank you for your help with this request very truly. Yours, John View, Mayor.
Thank you, Clerk Patel. At first, I want to take a moment to welcome everyone to city auditorium and for those who are joining. Quick review of this meeting this evening. A brief explanation of the legal requirement. I'll start with the joint convention of the city council and school committee to fill a vacancy of the school committee. According to the city charter, such vacancies shall be filled by a vote of majority of the members of the two-thirds bodies, which in this case is thirteen votes. The successful candidate will serve the remainder of the term ending on December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five. If they wish to continue at the at-large representative of the school committee, they must run for reelection in the election held in November of two thousand twenty-five. The process, the candidates' presentation for this process. Candidates will, and I'm going to ask them all if they could kindly step out and be sequestered in the hall outside the auditorium right after I go through this explanation of this process. Candidates' names will be drawn randomly in order to determine the order in which they will address this convention. Each candidate will have five minutes to speak. I will then ask each candidate two questions. Those questions were predetermined and the same questions will be asked of each candidate. Once each of the candidates has had the opportunity to address the convention, they may join the audience in the auditorium to hear the deliberations. Nominations into deliberation process. Any member of this convention may nominate a candidate after we go through those presentations and listen to them. The nomination must be seconded and the nominee must receive a majority vote of the members present in order to move forward. There will be no limit of the number of nominees and each member may cast votes for as many nominees as they wish. Once nominations are complete, the members of the convention will discuss the nominees in the order of their nomination. Each member of the convention will receive two opportunities to speak on each candidate and then we'll get into the voting process. Each member of this convention will be asked to state their chosen candidate, casting a vote for only one individual. Once voting concludes, the results will be announced. If no candidate has secured thirteen votes, the top three candidates with any ties will then advance to the next voting round while the others will be removed from the ballot. The chair will announce the remaining candidates and another round of voting will take place. If no candidate secures thirteen votes, the candidate with the fewest votes and any ties will be eliminated and the remaining candidates will move forward to the next voting round. If however, if however, if there are two candidates who remain, voting continues until one of the candidates achieves thirteen votes. That is the process and once a candidate receives thirteen votes, I, the chair, will announce the successful candidate and declare them the new at-large member of the Chickaby School Committee. The new member will then be asked to report to the clerk's office and they will take an oath of office and before they do that and sign the official log and then they can become a voting member of the school committee. That is the process. Any questions about the process from any members of the convention? Seeing none, we'll move forward with the process as I explained and I will politely ask all of our candidates to please step out into the hallway. We're asking you to be sequestered and we'll be bringing you in randomly.
Oh, yes.
And and for the viewing audience, we have a statement that's addressed to this committee, this whole convention, from the school committee member, Ms. Deanna Russo, that I'm going to read. And for the record, so Ms. Russo is absent from the meeting this evening and abstaining from the vote because her husband is an applicant for the vacant school committee at-large seat. She sought she sought guidance from the State Ethics Commission, which advises public officials on how to handle potential conflicts as she will not vote for any candidate. The State Ethics Commission, however, has advised that if her husband were to be selected by the committees, there would be no conflict of interest.
Thank you. Taking a thought for me to read too is great. I think we can check the door. Anyone can walk in.
Yeah.
It's not locked.
So we're starting with the process and randomly Joel McCullough has been selected as our first candidate. Joel, you have five minutes. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, distinguished members of the city council and school committee. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to be before you here this evening to offer myself as an applicant for the vacant at-large school committee seat. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Joel McCullough. I am a resident of Ward One where I reside with my wife, Deanna, and our dog, Teddy. Before I get into my qualifications and background, I want to take a second to thank Mr. Chester Zatella for his years of service to our community and to the students and staff of our district who have benefited from his kind heart and personal experience as a lifelong educator. I have had the privilege of knowing Chet for many years and I can tell you, even though as one of his one-time political opponents, you will not meet a kinder, more honorable man than him and our community is better off for his service. It is in that spirit of service that I offer my name for consideration for the seat that Mr. Zatella vacates. I've had the pleasure of knowing many of you over the course of my career in various roles as a mayoral aide, legislative aide, city counselor. All during those times, I have worked to serve the community that I love. During that time as well, I was able to earn a bachelor's degree from Arizona State University, a master's in public administration from the University of Miami, and I am currently pursuing my doctorate in educational leadership at American International College. While much is known about my past life in government and the those experiences, I've also had a great privilege of working and serving our greater community in other ways. Perhaps what is not known well is the work I have been doing since I left the political world and focused myself on the work that inspired me to get into public service in the first place, supporting our students and schools. When I left the legislature, I went to work for the chief financial officer of the Holy Oak Public Schools as a finance and accountability consultant. There I took the skills I learned working in government and applied them to the education sector, working to improve the financial controls and operations within the schools and overseeing large-scale projects within the department. During that time, I was mentored by the district CFO, who was a longtime educator and high school principal. We discussed my longtime passion for education, having worked as a paraprofessional and substitute teacher here in Chickaby while I was in college. And my passion for working with students is a longtime athletic coach. It was evident to him at that time that I belonged to working in schools. And when a need arose at a school that was in the district, which was struggling with operations and leadership, he asked me to go help fix things and I am forever grateful that he did. I'm currently in my third year as an administrator at Dean Technical High School in Holyoke, where I have served as the dean of management and operations and now is their career and technical education director. I've also spent half a year last year teaching a journalism class so I could gain valuable experience as a classroom teacher. Today, I oversee staff of eighteen vocational educators and three vocational teaching assistants. I am also responsible for building and overseeing the school budget with the principal and I manage our school's cooperative education work-based learning program that places vocational students in real full-time jobs in their respective trades. In my time as director, I'm most proud of having overseen a five hundred and eighty percent increase in their cooperative education placements, having helped and right securing millions of dollars in competitive grant funding for our school and helped improve the school and vocational program operations. The work I get to do every single day on behalf of our staff and with our students inspires me and fulfills me like nothing I have ever done before. That is why I'm interested in bringing this kind of experience and perspective to the Chickaby School Committee in an effort to promote and expand our own vocational programs, of which I am a proud graduate. Bring financial and government expertise to assist our committee and our schools in the financial challenges that we know are all expected ahead. Additionally, it's my goal to help the schools while respecting our taxpayers and ultimately ensuring that Chickaby students get what I got, a world-class education in the best schools, city, and community I have ever known. I love the city and our schools. Anything that I have accomplished in my career is a direct result of our schools and the teachers that invested in me while in them. That is why it has been my life's mission to serve and I would gladly do so again if you would give me that honor. Thank you for your consideration and I welcome to the opportunity to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. We have two questions for you and I'll start with the first question. What do you believe are the most critical priorities for improving student outcomes in our district and how would you work to advance those priorities within the school committee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I think it's evident to all of us with the primary issues facing our school district and that's meeting students where they are, finding ways to increase our test scores and make sure that we're compliant with what may be current or past MCAS regulations. We'll see what the state comes up with there. But it's more than test scores and I see that in my role as a career technical education director every day, especially as a district in Chickaby that has invested in CTE programs in both of the high schools. It's ensuring that we produce professional students to go enter the workforce or go to school and ensuring that they have all the skills necessary to ensure that they're productive members of society and they come back here to our community of Chickaby, stay long-term, live, work, and raise their family to contribute to our long-term success. That's why I was able to do what I did, have done so far in my career because of the school district that prepared me to do that. And so now as we've looked at the pathway programs, for instance, that we've added at Chickaby High School and we look at the continuing success of what we've had at Chickaby Comp, building on those, growing on those and ensuring that every kid has access to their desired pathway.
Thank you. I have a second question for you. It is effective collaboration between the school committee and the superintendent is essential to addressing the challenges faced both our schools and our society. How would you promote strong teamwork between the school committee and the superintendent to tackle these challenges?
Well, one thing I have that's pretty unique is I come into the process having been an evaluator of instructional staff. I evaluate all eighteen of my vocational educators as well as my three current technical education assistants. And as what one of the primary roles of the school committee, as you all know, is evaluating the performance of the superintendent. I've been lucky enough to watch every one of the school committee meetings so far this year and have paid very close attention to the playbook that the superintendent has put out, reaching and achieving the goals that he has put out. I agree with the vast majority of them and perhaps have some perspective that I think could elevate the district. Ultimately, it's having clear communication, setting clear expectations like we would with any of our educators and then asking those hard questions, particularly as we look at where we're headed from a financial perspective. Gone is the era of unlimited spending brought to you by the COVID crisis and it is getting exceptionally difficult for our educational institutions to meet the needs of a diverse student body and workforce, which we need to do, but it's a lot harder to do without the exceptional addition of funds that we have seen over the years. So what we've learned is that we have, we need a lot of the positions that we added or a lot of the programs that we added, but how do we find a way to sustain them long-term? So ultimately, I think, working with clear communication with the superintendent, making sure that we stay consistent with hitting goals, not just reviewing them at the end of the year, but continually checking on where those goals are and progress towards those goals are, I think ultimately will result in a good relationship with the superintendent and school committee and overall long-term success for our district.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Next up, we have Mark McCarthy, correct?
Yes.
Welcome, Mr. McCarthy. You have the floor for your five-minute intro.
Thank you much. Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark McCarthy, resident of Chickaby along with my wife and son. He's in his second year pre-K at Zatella Early Childhood Center where I served last year in the role.
Mark, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Could you just pull the mic a little closer?
A little closer.
And make sure the green light is on. Thank you.
Yeah, green light. This is good. So my son is in his second year of pre-K at Zatella Early Childhood Center. Last year, I served as vice president of the PTO there and have recently volunteered to support Principal Reed as a member of their school council. I'd like to share with you my hopes, my qualifications, and my commitments. I hope that we can contribute to better outcomes for students, including those often identified as underserved, like those from low-income families, multilingual learners and students with disabilities. Dr. Ware has called the goal of his vision building equity and excellence for all, a theme I embrace. I hope that teachers and administrators in Chickaby feel appreciated and supported so that we are a district known in the region for high teacher retention and job satisfaction. I hope that the recent removal of the MCAS graduation requirement will recalibrate educational power dynamics toward the local level. I believe that the state and federal government are important partners that can support districts, but I have concerns about the ways that politics shape educational policy and reform. I hope that when we strive for excellence for our students, that we do so through the professionalization of teachers, not the enrichment of curriculum publishers. I'm not a licensed teacher in Massachusetts. I'm a literacy teacher educator. I teach teachers how to teach kids to read. I spend time in public schools as a supervisor of student teachers, partnering with principals and mentor teachers to develop those student teachers into great teachers. I've also been a part of recent DESI grant-funded literacy initiatives and consortia and I saw from the October second meeting that our district is working with Bay Path in a similar function. Inherent in the work of teacher education is the assumption that we can make schools and teachers better. The desire for improvement is not an indictment of public schooling. Amidst all of the hard work, innovative instruction, community collaborations, in the midst of all the great work our schools do, there are places to get better. It's both and, not either or. We are doing well and we can get better. That's a stance taken by the greatest educators I know. I'm also a literacy researcher. Literacy is central to the work of schools and literacy outcomes are becoming a larger part of school accountability. Literacy research is diverse and there is not universal agreement within the field, but there are strong currents in the national dialogue, state-level policies and curricular materials. I also understand some of the ways that educational research can be taken up to meet political ends that do not prioritize the best interests of students. I can provide an academic perspective. I acknowledge the distinction between an appointment and an election. I would enter into this role with a full humility of someone who has not undergone the experience of a campaign nor received the mandate of a popular vote. I commit to earning your confidence and that of the residents of Chickaby and the stakeholders in Chickaby Public Schools. I'm committed to putting students' learning first while acknowledging that teacher well-being is central to supporting their learning. As we crystallize the vision of our district, I'm hopeful that creativity and innovation may light our way. I'm committed to using my time in this role as an advocate for the promise of what education can be when local governments assert their right to empower teachers, represent communities in the curriculum, and center the values that tie us to one another. Dr. Ware is off to a strong start and I want to serve Chickaby in this committee in helping him craft and enact the vision that leads us to excellence and equity for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
I have two questions for you. The first question, what do you believe are the most critical priorities for improving student outcomes in our district and how would you work to advance those priorities within the school committee?
I think I'm coming from a position where I would usually see literacy first and literacy is tied to accountability quite a bit and it leads to other successes across content areas. And so I would probably want to focus on identifying the obstacles to success at the early literacy stage as a main priority, given my ability to contribute to those conversations. I would think that my experience working with DESI-funded initiatives and seeing the work that our school district is trying to do and establishing grants and partnerships and consortia, that I could provide some assistance in those ways as well, but focusing really first on making sure that students are getting the education they need, starting with a solid background in literacy.
Thank you. The next question. Effective collaboration between the school committee and the superintendent is essential to addressing the challenges facing both our schools and our society. How would you work to promote strong teamwork between the school committee and the superintendent to tackle those challenges?
I think it starts with some communication, first of all. I don't know the superintendent very well, but from what I've read about the work that he's doing, I think that he and I share an ideological vision for what school should be. And I think that when the school committee can be on board with that vision, it's really easy to start setting goals that we can share together. I don't imagine that we would all agree on everything and it's important that there is pushback at certain points and not just accepting without challenging one another and being critical about our goals and the functions of each of our roles. But I think sharing the same set of values and beliefs would be very central to how we could start to set goals for a collective effort.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome.
Hi.
Hi, could you just tell us your name?
Felicita Sintra.
Oh, okay. Ms. Sintra, am I saying that okay?
Yes.
Ms. Sintra, you have the opportunity for a five-minute presentation or an introduction.
All right. As I said, my name is Felicita Sintra. I have been a Chickaby resident since two thousand seventeen. I am a proud mother of two teenage boys currently attending high school and receiving special education services. I am also a licensed social worker and clinical supervisor at B H M, providing services to families in various communities, including Chickaby. As a parent and professional, I have witnessed firsthand efforts to support our students achieve their educational goals in a safe environment. I have also witnessed how educational-related decisions impact students and their families. I am running for the at-large school committee vacancy because of the insight I have gained through my experiences with the district as a professional and as a parent. Moreover, my passion for helping others and values on the importance of education are strong motivators for my interest in this position. I have a unique set of skills that will allow me to integrate with a community, committee, if elected. Because of my professional background, I understand the importance of communication and active listening. This is key in all aspects of everyone's life. I like to have an open mind and listen to other opinions. I also have compromise and essential, I also believe compromise is an essential aspect of working, of working as a team. As everyone, as someone who has always worked in teams, I value diversity in areas of expertise and belief from healthy and respectful disagreement. I am a team player who understands the importance of collaboration. I am, this aside from my written statement, but I am also currently a member of Human Society Committee for the V E A and the Valley Educational Associates and they are a day program that provides services for individuals with intellectual disabilities. I am invested in the improvement of students' overall academic performance. If elected, I will work on finding ways to support struggling students, address disparities in student achievement, and ensure all students have equal access to quality education. Support teachers implement innovative teaching strategies according to state standards and ensure teachers have appropriate tools, training, and supports to help students in their classrooms. As a commission, I understand how the overall well-being of students can affect their academic performance. If elected, I will utilize my knowledge and expertise to offer suggestions and address concerns related to students' well-being. I am also interested in strengthening school and caregiver relationships. If elected, I will work on finding ways to help strengthen the alliance between school staff and, between school staff and caregivers. I will offer ideas on activities and focus on strengthening school, the relationship. In closing, I want to reiterate my passion about education and overall well-being of our students in our community. If elected, I will utilize my skills to engage in meaningful conversations while having an open mind to diverse ideas. I will compromise when needed to help advance the committee's agenda. I strongly believe my skills will be valuable to the committee and the school district as a whole and it is because of that that I will ask you for my vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sintra. I have two questions for you and I'll start with the first question. What do you believe are the most critical priorities for improving student outcomes in our district and how would you work to advance those priorities within the school committee?
So I guess I'll go to one of my notes on my statements. I think student well-being, it's one of very important aspects of their being able to achieve academic success. There's a lot of, as a clinician, I see a lot of the struggles of the children goes through and how the impact and in how it impacts. in, how it impacts their ability to engage in classrooms. So one way that I could suggest that I can help in a role in the committee will be utilizing my clinical skills. I'm thinking, trying to think of specific details or examples, what I can come up with one, but I, I think alliance, going back to the statement, the alliance with the caregivers in the community targeting the well-being, you know, to, I apologize.
All right.
A little nervous over here. I guess I'm going back to my skills as a clinician and what I have seen as a parent and a provider. I think bringing that expertise to the team will be helpful and I, I
Okay, next question. Effective collaboration between the school committee and the superintendent is essential to addressing the challenges faced both by our schools and our society. How would you promote strong teamwork between the school committee and the superintendent to tackle those challenges?
That's an area where I believe I have very strong skills at, at my resumes. You know, I have worked doing coordination work. So facilitating conversations, like I said, active listening, bringing up being clear with the communication with the issue at hand, it's very important. I talked about compromise. There are times where also compromise is needed. But I think having the open conversations, being open to different ideas and opinions will help, you know, bridge the communications. And, you know, gain asking questions so I make sure that I'm understanding both sides in, in kind of like bringing those back to the committee and team.
Thank you, Ms. Sintron.
Thank you.
Hi, Christopher Acevedo, did I say your name correctly? Christopher, welcome. You have five minutes for your introduction.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the city council and school committee board. As was stated, my name is Christopher Acevedo. I am a twenty-year resident of Chicopee and I'm honored to stand before you today as a candidate for our town's school committee board. As a proud member of this community and a dedicated parent, I am someone deeply invested in the success of our schools. I currently have four children of school age in Chicopee, as well as two adult children who graduated from Chicopee High School. I believe I am qualified for this role because of my eleven years in corporate management, as well as my current career in the United States Air Force. I have also served on planning committees for the Hope Worldwide Charity Western Massachusetts Chapter. As well, did I mention I have six children? These experiences have prepared me for many challenges in life and I look forward to the challenge of being a member of this school committee. If elected, this town will acquire a school committee member with a personal vested interest in his role, excellent communication skills, and a firsthand knowledge of the specific needs of our school district. I also understand the importance of fiscal responsibility. As stewards of public funds, we must balance investing in our schools with being accountable to taxpayers. I will approach every decision with transparency, integrity, and a focus on long-term benefits to our community. This appointment isn't about me, however, it is about what we can achieve together. My career in the military has taught me that the importance of teamwork and collaborating with others to achieve a common goal. My eleven-year experience in a unionized environment at United Parcel Service helps me to understand the complex task of working with labor unions to ensure our customers, i.e. the students, receive the education they deserve while respecting the labor and rights of the teachers. I ask for you to consider not just me, but the future of our children and our community as you make your decision today. Together, we can make a meaningful difference in the lives of students and families. Thank you for your time, your trust, and your commitment to our schools. I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you. Your first question. What do you believe are the most critical priorities for improving student outcomes in our district? And how would you work to advance those priorities within the school committee?
So the first thing that I, that I notice as a parent, that it's the most critical priority for improving student outcomes is essentially, there's a discipline issue, as I've noticed with, you know, with a lot of students in a lot of the schools. And I think that's a, it's a really important piece to education. You can't receive a quality education if you're being distracted by other students that are not disciplined and are not being held accountable for their actions. It's a big distraction. It can cause a lot of issues throughout educating and I think that's, it's also a distraction for the teachers because it now divides their time away from instructing and they have to do a lot more reprimanding and sometimes that's not always effective. It's not easy to educate and reprimand students at the same time. So that would, that would kind of, that would be my priority to improve the student education is trying to figure out how we can work through this, this, you know, system that we have now of holding students accountable for their actions.
Thank you. Effective collaboration between the school committee and the superintendent is essential to addressing the challenges facing both our schools and society. How would you promote strong teamwork between the school committee and the superintendent to tackle those challenges?
So as I had stated earlier, I understand teamwork is a really big factor for any goal you have in life. So any group of people that are trying to accomplish something have to work together. So for, for me personally, if I was a member of this committee, if I'm selected, obviously I'm going to view the superintendent, you know, as more of a colleague rather than someone I'm, say, working against or I have to constantly try and convince them of something. I would much more prefer to view the superintendent as someone that I'm working with and try to have shared goals with the superintendent. Obviously, you know, that may not always happen. Sometimes we'll have differences of opinion, but there's lots of professional ways to work through that. I think that's a big key is just having an open line of communication and not viewing someone, you know, as an adversary.
Thank you, Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, Jessica Avery. Ms. Avery, you have your five-minute intro.
Good evening, Mayor View, President Laflamme, Vice President Zgarowski, city councillors and school committee members. My name is Jessica Avery and I'm before you today on American Education Week to ask for your consideration to represent Chicopee as an at-large school committee member. I want to thank school committee member Chester Zatella for his twenty years of service to Chicopee and our schools. When considering the next school committee member, it is crucial to center the needs of our community. This appointment happens at a critical time when educator wages stagnate against inflation, student behaviors and social emotional needs escalate, and safety concerns for students and educators grow. And our parents and guardians continue to provide their children with the best that they can. Chicopee's history, like its people, as a gateway city, is hardworking and resilient. Our city government, students and educators showed us that during the COVID-19 pandemic. I witnessed my mother, an ESP formerly known as a paraprofessional, sit at our kitchen table and encourage her students to engage and learn on an eleven-inch screen during a tense time for all of us. That same resilience and hard work is why I sit before you today. My parents moved to Chicopee to provide their children with a community of opportunity. Chicopee's impact on my education started at Side by Side and then Creative Corner. My parents knew that these schools would prepare me for Striber Elementary, Fairview Veterans Memorial Middle School, and Chicopee Comprehensive High School. The same school where my maternal grandfather subsed in the shop, subbed in the shop classes, now CTE, after retiring from a career in electronics education. As a school committee member, I bring extensive knowledge and experience to the fields of education and public service, directly traceable to opportunities and learnings provided by and in Chicopee. My first memory of change came from a middle school reach group project called Wetland Extreme Teens. We went on to Colorado where we provided solutions that benefited economic development and environmental needs. How many other school districts provide their kids the opportunity I got? Only a few years later, I worked as a site coordinator at Children First, a nature-based childcare center. This role required me to meet the needs of parents and students while following state regulation and coordinating with public school teachers. During this time, I also maintained a full-time course load at Hoyle Community College and later Mount Hoyle. My reality growing up in Chicopee as a first-generation working-class student inspired me to pursue a career in public service. And prior to pursuing my public policy and administration degree focusing on public and nonprofit management, I had the absolute honor of working as the House Research Director for the Special Committee on the Hoyle Soldiers' Home COVID-19 Tragedy. In that role, I witnessed firsthand the impact of government failure. But also as a result, I witnessed a community of veterans, their families, healthcare workers, and union representatives come together to ensure that the state learned from this mistake and never repeated it again. Immediately following while pursuing my degree, I worked as campaign manager for now state representative Shirley Ariaga. A veteran herself, I witnessed my grandfather for the first time share with her his own experience of being a loadmaster in the Air Force at Westover. She and I spoke on the doors with parents thrilled about their child's free breakfast and lunch while others were worried about special education funding. I have also witnessed government successes when my community members' voices were centered and heard. Public service must be done in the world. Government, though made of words, is done by action. Following the state rep campaign, I began taking Spanish language classes virtually at S T C C and Continue Springfield Technical Community College and continue studying for full fluency. These experiences have shaped my public service philosophy, celebrating and honoring who we are and understanding what we need. That's why I believe to create powerful impactful policy, it's important to name areas others shy away from. I recognize that rose-colored glasses don't help us see, they blur our vision. The data shows Chicopee Public Schools have significant staffing gaps, increased student behavioral and programmatic needs and an aging infrastructure. As a school committee member, it would be my duty to pursue policies and fundings that address those needs. Without them, our students and educators don't and can't have an environment to thrive. Additionally, Chicopee Public Schools have a growing population with special needs, about one in four students, according to the current data. My own family has navigated this experience with my mom allowing me to join in on I E P meetings. However, special education has one of the largest employment gaps, likely in part because of the pay and safety concerns. Increased state regulation around language and literacy programs adds further financial strain when hiring new specialists. Transportation such as circuit breaker funding reimbursement remains central to the conversation since getting a child to school is the first step. We have an obligation for every student to get the education that they need and I will uphold that. When looking at circumstances as a problem, people get lost in how we got there and lose sight of what can get us out. Understanding a problem isn't celebrating it, but recognizing it. And with my Chicopee ingenuity, I see these moments as an opportunity for growth, much like the opportunities my parents in Chicopee schools created for me. I would be honored to represent the people of Chicopee utilizing my relationship skills and experiences to provide every child and family and educator with the opportunities they need. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two questions for you. What do you believe are the most critical priorities for improving student outcomes in our district? And how would you work to advance those priorities within the school committee?
Yes, thank you. So if we look at the data, we have over seventy-two percent of our students are high needs. Sixty-six percent are low income and as I said, about twenty-five percent are students with disabilities and fifteen percent are first language, not English learners. So we need to also consider what is happening outside of the classroom. And if Chicopee is not supporting the child, the family as a whole, I don't think that we are able to actually address those student outcomes. So I would work with the city council as we have recently raised taxes. We have the F Y twenty-five budget of about a hundred and twenty-six million. I would look at ways that we can maximize the funding that we have to adopt programs, much like we've seen in Chelsea for time allocated for one-on-one tutoring. There's a lot of learning that we have to do, but there is a lot of learning that we also have from peers. So I think it's also important to see what our colleague gateway cities are doing to maximize their student outcomes as well.
Thank you. Effective collaboration between the school committee and the superintendent is essential to addressing the challenges facing both our schools and our society. How would you promote strong teamwork between the school committee and the superintendent to tackle those challenges?
Yeah, so communication, accountability, and transparency are all key to that. If we don't understand what is happening in the schools and if we don't have that communication and that relationship and there is not that trust, you can't have an effective relationship with anybody, including a superintendent. So my skills and abilities to work in contentious, heated and oftentimes not built on consensus environments is what I bring to the table for this conversation. So working with the superintendent, I would bring all those skills and ensure that I bring my colleagues and other community members into the fold.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Avery. Hi, Jason Fay. Welcome, Mr. Fay. You have five minutes for your intro.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank everybody here for this opportunity, but also like to thank Chet for, you know, the last sixty-plus years of his dedicated service to the city of Chicopee, the residents, students, teachers, and so on. My name is Jason Fay. I've been a lifelong Chicopee resident for forty-six years. I attended four different public schools growing up as we moved quite often. I recently retired. I'm a twenty-year correctional officer. I retired in April and currently work for Trinity Solar, helping people save money and, and and kind of take a little bit of I guess priority over their budget and put them in a better place. I feel the last twenty years working at the jail was really unfulfilling to my soul as a human being. It was, it was a tough twenty years and at this point now I'm trying to give back. Lived in Chicopee my whole life. I've actually coached, either volunteered or paid positions for the last twenty-six years. um, all the way from kindergarten all the way up to varsity level as an assistant coach. Currently, right now, I feel like this is a perfect opportunity to start giving back and feel good about what I do. Because the last twenty years kind of flew by and I wasn't able to kind of give back to the community as much as I'd like to. I have two young children in school, uh, one at comp and one at DuPont. And I feel like this is a great opportunity to kind of get involved, um, in what they're doing and not only them, but to help other kids and also support the, uh, staff. Myself, I was a teacher for six, over six years in Springfield. And I also taught at Chickaby High as the in-school suspension teacher before I started at the jail. Um, so I'm, I'd like to get back into that now.
Thank you, Mr. Fay. I have two questions for you. The first question, what do you believe are the most critical priorities for improving student outcomes in our district? And how would you work to advance those priorities within the school committee?
I think, uh, one of the biggest, um, priorities in my mind is safety. Um, I feel that, you know, there's a lot that is going on throughout the country. And, you know, schools are a safe place for our children to go to, um, to develop and kind of turn, turn themselves into, um, contributing, uh, members of society as they, as they grow up. Um, I think, you know, different, how can I help to advance that? Well, I think my, uh, background in corrections kind of gives me a little bit of a, an edge on, you know, different ways to train through policies, uh, you know, having policies that we can kind of, uh, adhere to and, you know, try to make this fun and not make this a, a place where kids go to school scared. Uh, I want kids to go to school happy, um, ready to engage and, and kind of, um, get better every day. I mean, that's the goal for everybody is whatever you're doing, a, a student, a friend, family members, just to get better.
Thank you. And the second question, effective collaboration between the school committee and the superintendent is essential to addressing the challenges facing both our schools and our society. How would you promote strong teamwork between the school committee and the superintendent to ta- to tackle those challenges?
Well, I think just getting everybody on the same page, um, is, is important to, uh, to get better at anything. Um, you know, I, I think the coaching that I, the coaching background that I have, I feel the, the whole goal is to, um, put a plan in place, uh, and have everybody work together to get there. And I think that, you know, there's a lot of smart people up here and a lot of people that have been kind of dedicated to the city of Chickaby, the students, uh, the community. And I think just working together to, uh, get on the same page to make it fun for the students and also for the parents. Um, get the parents involved as much as we can because, um, you know, they're, they're giving the, their kids to the school. And, uh, we want to make sure that they, uh, believe in everything that we do. Uh, and hopefully we can work together to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Fay. So Jeb, uh, I've just been brought to my attention that we may be having an issue with Zoom. And at this particular time, I'd like someone to give us a motion for a two-minute recess. I have a motion for a two-minute recess. Can I please take the role?
President Laflamme. Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Yes, Chomsky.
Yes.
Bree.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor View.
Yes.
Yes. Barrett.
Yes.
Schofield.
Yes.
Brooks. Lamont. Yes. Bernard.
Yes.
Twenty-two, yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. We'll be back in two minutes. So I'd like to entertain a motion to return to session. No, just made. Motion made in sec- motion to return to session? Motion made in second to return to session. We'll take a roll call.
President Laflamme. Roy.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Zigorowski.
Here.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Huh?
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Rampits.
Yes.
Chomsky. Labrie.
Yes.
Vinnie Acostello.
Yes, I said yes.
Mayor View.
Yes.
Datello. Barcelo. Stout.
Yes.
Barrett.
Present.
Schofield.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lamont.
Yes.
Gerard.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Twenty-two, yes.
Twenty-two, yes, and those who voted present, I assume that meant yes. We're returning to session. I'm going to turn it over to Ms., uh, Thebold, right? Welcome. You have, you have a five-minute intro.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Hello, everyone. My name is Terry Thebold, Thebold. I am a fifty-five-year-or-so resident of the, of Chickaby, city of Chickaby. I've raised, uh, two children, my husband and I, two children in the Chickaby system. I, uh, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. If chosen to fill the at-large position in the school committee, I imagine myself supporting the committee in their efforts to cultivate a safe learning environment where our children can thrive, as well as providing our teachers and administrators with the tools and resources to allow them to prosper. I have little to no politi- political experience, excuse me, but I do feel that my previous experience as a plant manager in a small manufacturing facility in North Hampton, uh, gave me a certain skill set that could be beneficial to the school committee. Uh, we had a small plant of twenty-five. I had to wear many hats, uh, in this role. Uh, we had a very successful operation. I, I am not afraid of much. Uh, I, I would like, um, the opportunity to be able to help the city that I've lived in for so many years and I have several friends who are teachers also. I, I've, hmm, I think that's probably all I have as my introduction.
Thank you. I have two questions for you. The first question, what do you believe are the most critical priorities for improving student outcomes in our district and how would you work to advance those priorities within the school committee?
So I would think s- safety for the, the students. I feel like engagement, their engagement in the activities at school. I feel that there are, the children these days have so many distractions aside from social media and their phones, the, the, the lives they have to live. I wouldn't want to be a child in this day and age. And I feel that there are, there have to be programs that we can help to implement to give the kids s- uh, feeling of security and that, that, that they belong in the school system to learn and that, that's what they're there for, not to be judged or what, whatever the situation is. So I would, I would, um, work with the school committee. Again, I don't have a lot of experience, although I've, I've run projects. As the plant manager, there's a whole list of things I forgot, sorry. But I can, I can work as a team member. I can lead a team. I'm very versatile. And I, uh, I think I could help the school committee.
Thank you. The next question, effective collaboration between the school committee and the superintendent is essential to addressing the challenges facing both our schools and our society. How would you promote strong teamwork between the school committee and the superintendent to tackle those challenges?
So I, I feel that I do have, uh, experience working in a team environment. I, I'll go back just quick and it's, it's off the quote, off the question itself, but we worked as a team in this plant that ran twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And there's an effort that has to be established to be successful amongst the group of people. And we were, we worked as a team. I knew I couldn't achieve the goals that I wanted by myself. I needed the people who were on the floor that I managed. And they depended on me as well when they needed something, whether it was safety or whether they needed a day off or whatever it was. We worked together. So I feel like I could be an asset to the communications between, uh, the superintendent and, and serve the school committee in that manner as a resource or working as a team.
Thank you, Ms. Thebold.
Thank you all.
Rafael, welcome. Please have a seat.
Thank you.
Next up is Rafael Nazario. Rafael, you have the floor for your five-minute intro. Welcome.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of this council and school committee and mayor of Chickaby, I thank you for providing this opportunity for the residents to speak their own truth in regards to being appointed to this. I grew up in the city of Springfield. I was there from a very early age until a teenager. And I saw what the public school system could do to help children who are disenfranchised. Chickaby is faced with many of the same issues that the city of Springfield comes across. I later on moved to Florida, graduated from the public school system and joined the United States Navy. In the Navy, I learned how important and crucial it is to receive the truth in education. That's where I believe I learned education. After the United States Navy, returned back to Springfield, was involved in city politics, very active. But more importantly, I was engaged with my community. I was engaged to make a difference for the children and the youth in the city, to provide information and a representation of a face that they didn't have involved in government. Now, I'm not saying to select a face according to her skin or color, because I believe everything should be by merit. Everything should be by merit. And I'm not here actually for myself, but I'm here to advocate for the proper school committee member that's here to help you and function for you, not to be a shaker within a year, but someone who's going to provide assistance until the upcoming election. I have a son. I'm a stay-at-home dad and I've learned what it is that possibly many women for ages go through in regards to staying home with children. I completed my MBA in two, twenty-twenty-three and I haven't worked for a very long time. Women get disenfranchised because they stay home with their children and no one wants to respect the job they do. Being a parent is probably the highest calling we could ever have. And I've learned that I really got to provide a positive future for my son. And as a father, I think it's important that we stay engaged and provide opportunity for our children.
Thank you. I have two questions for you.
Yes, sir.
First question, what do you believe are the most critical priorities for improving student outcomes in our district? And how would you work to advance those priorities within the school committee?
Well, I, I've always said that we need to talk to the professionals, like the superintendent, to the teachers, to the principals. As school committee members, what I would provide is the representation of the face of Chickaby and get, and get the information to the administration and see if it works. I have much to say, but I'm trying to be polite about speaking and not going on too long.
Okay. Are you ready for the next question?
Yes, sir.
Next question. Effective collaboration between the school committee and the superintendent is essential to addressing the challenges facing both our schools and our society. How would you promote strong teamwork between the school committee and the superintendent to tackle those challenges?
Well, like I, like I said, as a school committee member, the individuals are not the professionals in regards to knowing what academia is going to provide for our children. School committee members represent the idea of what the city of Chickaby needs and wants. The school system is very important. The generals of United States military emphasized how important education was because our troops needed education to use the technology, to be better troops. What's the backbone of the city is education. And we attract more people, positive people, hard-working people with a substantial, really good education system. So I think listening to our superintendent, listening to the teachers and the professionals is very important to solve many issues.
Thank you, Mr. Navar- Nazario. Thank you.
My all set?
All set. Welcome, Yvette. Hi, Ms. Toodle.
Yes.
You have your five-minute intro. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Yvette Toodle. Uh, I live in Ward Three and I currently work at Bay State Academy Charter Public School District in Springfield as the director of special education. This is not my first time before you. A couple of years ago, we had a vacancy and I had the opportunity to put my name in the hat. So I will reintroduce or reshare some things from, about myself. I graduated from South High in Worcester, class of eighty-eight. And went on to, uh, Becker College in, they had a campus in Leicester and Worcester. And that is where my love of education and my journey in education began. When I graduated from Becker in ninety-two, I went on to work for the Head Start Program with the Worcester Community Action Council. And, and I've been a public servant in public education ever since. I have served in the capacity of teacher, academic coach, assistant principal, administrator, coordinator and now director. What brought me to Chickaby was simply my family. And Chickaby is a great city to, to have a family, to raise a family. And now as a grandparent, it's a great place to have my grandsons. And as much as I think that Chickaby is a great city to live in, I also think that our school systems, they are right up there with all the other school systems in the Commonwealth. We lead the nation in education and our kids deserve the best. I know we have a lot of qualified applicants, but what sets me apart, I think, is my experience. And when it comes to school committees and school boards, you really want somebody that knows the business of education. Someone that can handle budget issues, curriculum issues, as well as personnel and leadership issues. School boards need to be held accountable. And it's really hard to hold us accountable for the education and the access to education for our neighbors and our community when we don't hold ourselves accountable at the selection process. So I think, I say all that to say that, um, I think my experience and my qualifications and my commitment to being a lifelong learner, um, makes me both a broad candidate and a unique candidate for this open vacancy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Toodle, I have two questions for you. The first question, what do you believe are the most critical priorities for improving student outcomes in our district? And how would you work to advance those priorities within the school committee?
I think the most critical priorities are our literacy initiative and our staffing concerns. For us to improve student outcomes, we have to have teachers. We have to have quality teachers. We have, we need instructional leadership that supports the outcomes that we desire. So I think that we really need to really take a a look at how we grow our teachers. Some of the best teachers started out as par educators or par professionals, and they, they're homegrown. So I think we need to look at how we prioritize that and how we work with our local community colleges and our local four-year institutions to develop staff. And then also along with that is our literacy initiative. If you grow great readers, then the math, the science, the social studies, the writing, all of the core curriculum and content areas, they all have one thing in common. You have to be literate. You have to be able, the literacy goes across the curriculum. And if we strengthen our literacy initiative, I think we strengthen our student outcomes.
Thank you. Effective collaboration between the school committee and the superintendent is essential to addressing the challenges facing both our schools and our society. How would you promote strong teamwork between the school committee and the superintendent to tackle those challenges?
So I think the school committee and the superintendent, they are not separate entities. I believe the superintendent is a member of the school committee. So I think that we all have a vested interest. And I think that if we are transparent or offer some transparency in how we do business and how we make decisions, and the school board and the school committee is aware of what each school's vision or mission is. And they, if the school mission statement supports the district mission and the school board body is in support of that vision, it will trickle down to even every classroom having a classroom mission and a classroom vision that builds upon so that we're growing graduates and we're all on one accord. Now, to answer the question about collaboration between the superintendent office in particular, those initiatives and the issues that are brought forth from the superintendent's office hopefully are the issues brought forth from the schools. Hopefully, we're surveying our students, our parents, and all of our stakeholders so that the issues that are brought before the school committee are representative of the community and the kids that we serve.
Thank you, Ms. Toodle. That's it. So next up for consideration is Jim Tannhauser. James was not available this evening. It's my understanding he is traveling at this particular moment. And he has a statement that is going to be read by Dr. Ware, his five-minute intro. Dr. Ware.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll read Mr. James Tannhauser's statement from the eye perspective as if I'm him this evening. Good evening, members of the City Council, School Committee, Superintendent Team, and viewing audience. My name is James Tannhauser, Jr., and I reside at Ninety-Sixth Pond View Drive. I believe that my experience, qualifications, and passion for our city and schools would be a great benefit for the school committee and the vacant at-large seat. Though I could not make it this evening due to travel that was planned prior to the vacancy of the seat, my interest in this opportunity remains. I have remained transparent and available for any questions and concerns that are in this process and look forward to answering any further questions if necessary. From twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two, I represented Ward One on the Chicopee School Committee. The immeasurable experience gained and lessons learned during that time allowed me to be a part of many important initiatives and opportunities, some of which include supporting the construction of Stefanics Playground, serving on negotiation teams to shape bargaining agreements that were fair to our city's taxpayers and compensatory to the hard work of the CEA and their members, serving on multiple hiring committees to interview many of the leaders that serve our school district to this very day, among many others. For the entirety of my tenure, I served as the chairperson of the curriculum school, excuse me, curriculum subcommittee while also spending time as the co-chairperson of the Finance and Budget Subcommittee and member of the Policy and Human Resources Subcommittee. During those four years, I also made a commitment to visiting every public K- twelve school building in our district, whether it was in Ward One or not. Our educators felt comfortable approaching me with praise or criticism for the direction of our board, while administrators felt equally as accounted for in my considerations and votes that would be cast at committee meetings. Even when not serving as an elected official, I have continued to keep a close ear in mind to Dr. Ware and his leadership through his role as superintendent. I am confident that we share a similar value system and priority for our students and our schools. His focus on school classroom environment paired with his concept of the holistic kid resonates and would be fully supported if selected. I'd like to extend a formal congratulations to Mr. Chet Satella on his school committee tenure and lifelong support of Chicopee Public Schools. His actions and initiatives as a school committee representative were extremely influential to me and other elected board members that he has seen join over the years. I hope that the decision made by our school committee and city council tonight stays true to the standards that Mr. Satella brought to our governing process for over twenty years. If selected for the seat, I can only promise to serve with an unwavering unwavering commitment to our schools and the individuals that grace their hallways each and every day. Parents and guardians of our students can rest assured with my proven track record of fair and consistent constituent service. My former colleagues that I served alongside on the board can trust in my dedication to the process and willingness to approach the current proposals and initiatives of the board with an open and prepared mind. Thank you for your time and consideration, James E. Tannhauser, Jr.
Thank you, Dr. Ware. Next up, we have Omar Erizari. Mr. Erizari, you have the floor for your five-minute intro.
Thank you. I promise there's no one after me, so this should be quick. Good evening, members of school committee and city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. As mentioned, my name is Omar Erizari, and I'm here to express my strong interest in filling the vacancy of school committee member at large. I come before you with a deep commitment in supporting our schools backed by both professional and personal experiences. On a personal level, I hold a master's in nonprofit management and philanthropy from Bay Path University, graduating with honors, and a bachelor's in psychology from Elms College. I also completed a nine-month leadership training with the National Council on Well-being and learned from transformational leaders from all over the nation. I have lived in Chicopee for approximately ten years, and my family and I have proud homeowners in the Wamasa area for the past five. As a parent of three children in our school district, one at Chicopee Comp, one at Bellamy, and one at Lambert-Lavoie, I have firsthand experience navigating the challenges of special education and advocating for the needs of our students. This fall, I also had the privilege and honor of participating and volunteering, coaching second graders on the Tigers soccer team, an experience that inspired me to consider being here tonight. As a director across agency initiatives with Department of Mental Health, I'm a passionate, I'm very passionate about advancing school-based initiatives across our state. In my current role, I work closely with the Birch TA Center, helping schools provide vital behavioral health supports through learning and training opportunities as well as hands-on support establishing their MTSS. I manage the statewide expansion of the BRIGHT program, which supports school-based bridge programs for students facing significant absences and challenges transitioning back to school due to serious emotional disturbances and significant mental illness. I actively contribute to the Behavioral Health in Schools Work Group that reports directly to the undersecretary and attend regularly the Special Education Advisory Council, where I bring the voice of students and families to critical policy conversations. I collaborate with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to support their social-emotional learning grants, as well provide consultation with their implementation of the medical and behavioral health emergency response plans. I partner with the Department of Public Health on school initiatives, including telebehavioral, telebehavioral health in schools, and I've worked closely with the Masters Association of Mental Health. And finally, I lead the Bipartisan Savior Communities Act, which focuses on reducing youth violence and responding to potential critical incidents, including school mass shootings. Outside of my role for DMH, I also serve as a second vice president, board member for the Food Bank of Western Mass. Ending hunger and addressing the root causes of food insecurity, including in schools, is another area I'm deeply passionate about, so passionate that I'm joining their forty-three mile walk next Monday to raise awareness. In Seeking DC, I also want to acknowledge the ethical responsibilities that comes with serving on the school committee. Given my professional role at the Department of Mental Health and the Food Bank, I understand the importance of transparency and integrity. If selected, I would exclude myself from any votes or discussions that directly involve me, my work at DMH to avoid any potential conflicts of interest. My goal is to prioritize the best interests of Chicopee students, families, schools, while maintaining the highest ethical standards. These experiences have given me a broad perspective on the challenges our schools face, but the opportunities that we have to address them. Chicopee faces real challenges, including the acute mental and behavioral health needs of our students, the resources and supports for our teachers, all while maintaining the highest educational standards. Additionally, the potential state budget cuts on the horizon and beyond raise serious concerns for our schools and community. However, with the dedication of the resilience of our educators, staff, and the community partners, I am confident that we can work together to find innovative solutions and continue providing the quality education our students deserve. Together, we have an opportunity to turn these challenges into a catalyst of growth and improvement. I believe my professional experience, lived experiences, my professional expertise, and passion for learning uniquely positions me to make meaningful contributions to this committee. I am committed to advocating for youth and families, educators, and administrators to ensure Chicopee schools remain a place where all students can thrive. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. I have, I have two questions for you. The first question, what do you believe are the most critical priorities for improving student outcomes in our district? And how would you work to advance those priorities within the school committee?
Well, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, I think one of the biggest components or significant components we need to address is the mental health and behavioral health needs of our students. And that goes in hand with not only the students and their families, but also the school administrators who are responding to those needs. And that's a complex issue. I mentioned food security is another one. I understand that in order to be successful in education, the schools ultimately have a daunting task to address all these other needs, and they can't do it alone. We can't expect our schools to be in a position to answer to those things. And so I think the school committee and the city council is in a position to ultimately address those things by collaborating with community partners and bringing resources to what seems to be, you know, daunting task. It is certainly possible. I've seen the good in Chicopee. I've seen the the amazing staff, the amazing administrators you have, and I believe that we can work together to make that happen.
Thank you. The next question I have for you is effective collaboration between the school committee and the superintendent is essential to addressing the challenges facing both our schools and our society. How would you work, how would you promote strong teamwork between the school committee and the superintendent to tackle those challenges?
Well, I think what what's important when it comes to working together collaboratively is really addressing what brings us together, right? I think we all, especially the people that were just coming in and waiting out there with me, are very passionate to see our school district and students and really our future community do well. And so it's a matter of addressing what brings us together, what we value as a community, and ultimately addressing that through strategic planning. And so I've seen the superintendent's strategic plan. I know that they're working on the next couple of years. Equity is an important aspect of this, and that means that we all have a stake. We all are part of the solution. And so I think it's really bringing us together and identifying those things that, again, make us a community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we begin the nomination and deliberation process, I think it's very important to mention how important it is and how excited I am to have eleven members of the Chicopee, of the city of Chicopee interested in serving the school districts. I want to thank you for your commitment to education first and foremost, and your passion for our school district is duly noted. And thank you for being here tonight to the eleven of you who are interested in in serving on the school committee. So at this time, I'd like to ask the members of this convention for nominations. I have Sandra Perret.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Sintron for the position. And I think that based on the committee that we have on the school committee, we have educators, we have people in finance, and I think she would bring a, a added perspective to the committee by being a LICSW, to get more greater depth to the individuals that are currently on our committee.
Thank you. I have one nomination of Felicia Sintron. Next, I have Susan Loops.
I would like to nominate Yvette Toodle, please.
Excuse me, mayor. So in the process that we outlined, we need a nomination and a second, and then we're going to take a vote to see.
Been a while.
If, yeah, it's been a while since you read that. The nomination must be seconded, and the nominee must receive a majority vote of all the members present. There are twenty-two members of the joint convention, so that would be twelve. And if a nominee gets twelve, they will make it on to the next round. So it's a, it's a, it's a nomination, a second, and then.
So I'm going to pause, I'm going to pause Susan's nomination, and we're going to go back to Ms. Sintron. We have a nomination. Can I get a second? Anyone to second the nomination of Felicia Sintron? So I have it second from Mary Beth Pinia Costello. So now Sintron will move on to the next round if she receives twelve votes from this body. So this convention, any comments on the nominations, on the nomination of Ms. Felicia Sintron?
Excuse me, mayor. Actually, the, the way the process that we outlined was nomination, second, then a vote, and then everyone would get it. Once we have a selective nominated candidates, then every member will have a chance to speak on their behalf. Nominate second, vote on each whoever's nominated.
So we'll hold off on the deliberations until after we get our nomination. So the first one that we're talking about is Felicia Sintron, and we, any, and we have it second the, from Ms. Mary Beth Pinia Costello. So now we'll take a roll.
And mayor, if I may just.
A yes vote is in support of her moving on to the next round. A no vote would be not to consider her for the next round.
And mayor, one more interruption, and I apologize. I just want everyone to be really clear. From this first nominee, the members can vote for as many nominees as they wish in this nomination round. And in the selection round, you will vote for one person. So right now, if someone is nominated and you want to move them to the next round, you can vote for as many of these folks as you want.
Thank you, attorney, for the clarity. So again, just for the public, we can vote for as many nominees as you'd like. That'll just get them to the second round. Again, it takes a vote of twelve to accomplish that role of making it to round two. So again, we have Felicia Sintron, who's been nominated and second, and we'll take a roll.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
No.
Ziegrowski.
No.
Ariaga.
No.
Brooks.
No.
Dob. Valkir.
No.
Krampitz.
No.
Chomsky.
No.
Labrie.
No.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Mayor View.
Yes.
The Talalopes.
No.
Barcello.
Yes.
Dow. Perret.
Yes.
Schofield.
Yes.
Brooks.
No.
Omar. Gerard. No. Bernard.
No.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, yes. It doesn't have the twelve.
So thank you, thank you, Ms. Sintron, for your interest. You will not be moving on to the next round. I'll now continue with nominations. I have.
Mayor View.
Mayor View.
Loops.
Yvette Toodle, please.
So I have a motion for Yvette Toodle. Any second. And seconded by Fred Crapitz, and we'll take a roll call.
President Laflambeau. Roy.
No.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zegrowski. Ariaga.
No.
Brooks.
No.
Goff. Valkir.
No.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
No.
Labrie. Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Mayor View.
Yes.
Satella Loops.
Yes.
Barcello.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Perret.
Yes.
Schofield.
Yes.
Brooks.
No.
Lama.
Yes.
Gerard.
No.
Bernard.
No.
I have eleven yes. Let me recount. One, two, three, four, five, six, nine, and eleven yes does not reach the twelve.
Thank you, Ms. Toodle, for your interest in the school committee. You did not achieve our second round. Do I have any other nominations?
Mayor View, I'd like to nominate Jason Fay.
So I have Counselor Brooks, who's joining us remotely, has nominated Jason Fay. Can I get a second on the nomination? Seconded by the Vice President, City Council, Frank Laflambeau. We'll take a roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
No.
Wagner.
No.
Zegrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
No.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff. Valkir.
No.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
No.
Labrie. Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Mayor View.
Yes.
Satella Loops.
Yes.
Barcello.
Yes.
Dow. Perret.
No.
Schofield.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lama. Gerard.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Fourteen yes. Fourteen yes. Who's on?
Mr. Fay, you'll be moving on to the second round. Any other nominations? I have Tim Wagner.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to nominate Omar Irazari.
I have Omar Irazari. Thank you. Can I get a second? I have a second from the Vice President, I'm sorry, President of the City Council, and we'll take a roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zegrowski.
No.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
No.
Goff. Valkir.
No.
Crapitz.
No.
Chomsky.
No.
Labrie.
No.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Mayor View.
Yes.
Satella Loops.
Yes.
Barcello.
Yes.
Dow.
Yeah.
Perret.
Yes.
Schofield.
Yes.
Brooks. Lama. Gerard.
No.
Bernard.
Yes.
I have fourteen yes. Move forward.
Omar Irazari will be moving forward to the second round. Nominations continued. I have Counselor Ariaga.
I nominate Jessica Avery.
I have a nomination for Jessica Avery, and second. Seconded by the President of the Council. Take a roll call.
President Laflambeau. Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zegrowski.
Yes.
Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
No.
Goff. Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky. Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Mayor View.
Yes.
Satella Loops.
Yes.
Barcello.
Yes.
Dow.
Yeah.
Perret.
Yes.
Schofield.
Yes.
Brooks. Lama. Gerard.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Twenty-one yes.
Twenty-one yes, and Jessica Avery moves on to the second round. Nominations continued. I have Ron Bernard Tanwin up first. Ron.
I'd like to nominate Terry Tebow, please.
I have a nomination for Terry Tebow. Anyone second that nomination?
I'll second the nomination.
Tim Wagner seconds the nomination. We'll take a roll call.
President Laflambeau. Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zegrowski.
No.
Ariaga.
No.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff. Valkir.
No.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky. Labrie.
No.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Mayor View.
Yes.
Satella Loops.
Yes.
Barcello.
Yes.
Dow. Perret.
Yes.
Schofield.
Yes.
Brooks. Lama. Gerard.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Fifteen yes.
And Terry Tebow will be moving on to the second round. Nominations continued. Grace Schofield.
I'd like to nominate Chris Acevito.
I have a nomination of Christopher Acevito.
I'll second that, mayor.
I have a second on that motion by School Committee Member Joe Gerard. We'll take a roll call.
President Laflambeau. Roy.
No.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zegrowski.
No.
Ariaga.
No.
Brooks.
No.
Goff. Valkir.
No.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky.
Yeah.
Labrie.
No.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Mayor View.
Yes.
Satella Loops.
Yes.
Barcello.
Yes.
Dow.
Yeah.
Perret.
Yes.
Schofield.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lama.
Yeah.
Gerard.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Fourteen yes.
Christopher Acevito has moved on to the second round. The nominations continued. I have Mary Beth Pinia Costello.
Thanks, mayor. I would like to nominate Rafael Nazario, please.
I have a nomination for Rafael Nazario. Do I get a second on that nomination?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Quick to the draw, President of the Council with a second on that nomination. We'll take a roll call.
President Laflambeau. Roy.
No.
Wagner.
No.
Zegrowski. Ariaga.
No.
Brooks.
No.
Goff. Valkir.
No.
Crapitz.
No.
Chomsky.
No.
Labrie.
No.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Mayor View.
Yes.
Satella Loops.
Yes.
Barcello.
Yes.
Dow. Perret.
Yes.
Schofield.
Yes.
Brooks. Lama. Gerard.
No.
Eleven yes. Eleven yes.
I'm sorry, but Rafael Nazario will be moving on to the second round. Next nations. George Balakir.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Joel McCullough.
I have a nomination of Joel McCullough. Anyone second? Seconded by the President of the Council. We're going to take a vote.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
No.
Wagner.
No.
Zegrowski. Ariaga.
No.
Brooks.
No.
Goff. Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
No.
Chomsky.
No.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Mayor View.
Yes.
Satella Loops.
Yes.
Barcello.
Yes.
Dow.
Dow.
Perret.
Yes.
Schofield.
Yes.
Brooks. Lama. Gerard.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Fifteen yes.
Mr. McCullough will be moving on to the second round. Nominations continue. Have any more nominations? Yes, I have Counselor Goff behind the flags. There you are. So the nomination of Mark McCarthy. You're going to get a second on that nomination. Second from Sonny Brooks. Roll call, please.
President Laflambeau. Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zegrowski. Ariaga.
No.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff. Dow. Crap.
Out of chair.
Chomsky.
Yes.
Labrie.
No.
Pinia.
Yes.
Mayor View.
Yes.
Satella Loops.
Yes.
Barcello.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Perret.
Yes.
Schofield.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lama. Gerard.
Yes.
Bernard.
No.
Sixteen yes.
Mark McCarthy will be moving on to the next round. Any other nominations? I have Don Lamoff. We have a nomination of James Tenhauser. Anyone want to second that nomination? Seconded by President Laflambeau. Roll call, please.
President Laflambeau. Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zegrowski. Ariaga.
No.
Brooks.
No.
Goff. Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz. Out of chair, still. Chomsky.
No.
Labrie.
No.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Mayor View.
Yes.
Satella Loops.
No.
Barcello.
Yes.
Dow. Perret.
Yes.
Schofield.
No.
Brooks. Lama. Gerard.
Yes.
Bernard.
No.
Mr. Tanwin, we did not move on to the second round. Any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, I got a motion to close.
Motion to close nominations.
Motion made in second to close nominations. Take a roll.
Yep. Okay, on closing nominations. President Laflambeau.
Yeah.
Roy.
Yes.
Wagner.
Yes.
Zegrowski. Ariaga.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Goff.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crapitz.
Yes.
Chomsky. Labrie.
Costello. Yes.
Mayor View.
Yes.
Satella Loops.
Yes.
Barcello.
Yes.
Dow.
Yes.
Perret.
Yes.
Schofield.
Yes.
Brooks. Lama.
Yes.
Gerard.
Yes.
Bernard.
Yes.
Twenty-two yes.
Motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the voting process. Each member of this convention will be asked to state the chosen candidate's name, and they can only vote for one individual. Once voting concludes, the results will be announced. If the candidate secures thirteen votes, or the top three candidates, any ties, will advance to the next round. So if no, I'm sorry, if no candidate secures the thirteen votes, then we'll move on to a tiebreaker. So we'll start with individual candidates, and we'll take a... First of all, I'm going to open it up to deliberation.
Here's the, we're going to discuss the nominees in order that they were nominated, and that's the order.
So here's the order of nomination. First, discussion of nominees. We have Jason Fay. First, let me go through the list. Jason Fay, Omar Omar Irazari, Jessica Avery, Terry Tebow, Christopher Acevito, Joel McCullough, and Mark McCarthy. And starting with discussion, Jason Fay. Any discussion on the candidate, uh, for school committee, Jason Fay? Yes?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Counselor Shamsky has the floor. You're next, Counselor Brooks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to everyone who took time to apply, interview, and... Right. So I will say this about Mr. Fay, that safety being one of his number-one issues is something that I can relate to. Uh, my first day of senior year, we were escorted out by SWAT teams because of a, uh, school shooter threat that turned out to be a hoax, but safety is a number-one priority, and I do, I do resonate with that. So I want to appreciate him for, uh, mentioning that. Thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, City Counselor Shane Brooks is joining us remotely.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you know, uh, with Counselor Shamsky had said, resonates with me, my daughter was on crutches that day and called me in tears because day one was so devastating for her as a senior. So safety in our public schools is paramount. And I believe that Mr. Fay will bring a level of professional conduct and respect. He's been a lifelong member of the city. He's been a devoted coach, father. He has my utmost respect, and I would implore the board to seriously consider his appointment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor Wagner?
Thank you, Mayor. Like, like Counselor Shamsky, it was, uh, my first day, although of sophomore year, that we had the active shooter threat, and it's a day that I'll remember forever. Um, I appreciate that, uh, Mr. Fay has taken such a strong stance in regards to student safety. Um, I feel as though, under your past two superintendents, substantial progress has been made, but, uh, I feel as though more progress can be made, and I'm glad to see that there is a candidate who, uh, is willing to take a good, hard look at that. Um, however, I don't think that that should be the only position that uh, student well-being has to do with a number of different areas, uh, including their reading, their social emotional development. And to me, I think that there are other candidates who have better expressed their views and opinions on the broader subjects. Uh, so I'd like to, to thank, uh, all of the candidates tonight for, for coming before this board. Unfortunately, I don't think that I can offer my support at this time, um, as other candidates have offered a broader range of opinions on a number of different subjects. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Labrie.
Yes, thank you, uh, all for, uh, Laflambeau. And I just want to put a word in for Jason Fay. Uh, he's forty-six-year city resident, uh, he's worked, uh, teaching them, coaching them, uh, skills, uh, worked in the jail. Well-rounded. Uh, he brings a little bit of everything and, uh, but one comment denominator is it's all about the kids. Uh, so that's why I'd like to, uh, put a plug in for Jay Fay, please. Thank you.
And Gerard?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'd just like to take a moment to thank all the candidates, uh, for coming forward and expressing interest, uh, and serving the community. I, I do want to give a plug for Jason Fay, uh, and I'm a firm believer. I've seen Jason grow up. I've seen him, uh, coach teams. And Jason's, uh, one of the type of guys where there's no, there's no I in team. It's, uh, it's about the team and, and not about himself. And, uh, no better role, um, or trait to have to serve on a, on a, on a board of thirteen members than to be having the willingness to work, uh, together. And, uh, Jason, uh, in my opinion, um, ha- has those traits, and I think would be a great fit, um, to serve. So thank you. Thank you all for coming out, and, uh, thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Susan Lopes. I thought I saw your hand up. Was that correct? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. It should be known that Mr. Uh, Mr. Fay had several conversations with my father over the past uh, couple of years, most recent years, and expressing an interest in serving on a school committee.
Thank you. Any other discussion about Jason Fay? Thank you. We'll move on to Omar Irizari. Discussion about Omar. Tim Wagner?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, to offer up my support, even, uh, if you may not have my, my final vote in the end, uh, for Mr. Irizari. After reading his resume and after hearing about, uh, his numerous involvements and accomplishments at the state and local level, I think he's got a well-rounded skill set, particularly as it pertains to student mental health, which I think is key in recovering from the COVID-nineteen pandemic, which I think we still have a long way to go in regards to that. Uh, I think he's got a tremendous resume. I think his record of service at the state and local level is absolutely outstanding, and, uh, I'd like to see his candidacy move forward.
Thank you. Any other discussion, Don Lamah?
There. Um, I don't know if he has my final vote yet, but he, uh, has the background that could help us. I, I would hope that if he doesn't, but he would at least consider several of his candidates, I wish, would run next time around. Yeah, I heard there any candidates at all last time. So if you don't make the cut now, full papers. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Sure, Mary Beth Pinia Costello.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I want to thank, um, everyone that applied in regard to the most recent candidate that we're discussing. Um, his social and emotional, um, background is going to be very helpful in our school district at this time. He's also fluent in two languages, English and in Spanish. And I believe that would be the, uh, first, not the first, but I don't believe at this point there's anyone that's fluent on the school committee in both English and in Spanish. So he carries with him a lot of social and emotional experience. He interviewed extremely well. He's well-versed in different subjects. And he is bilingual, which is always a help in our city that has a growing population of minorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other discussion? About Omar Irizari? Uh, Jay Doubt?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'll just echo the sentiments of, uh, some of our fellow board members here. Um, as the person who most recently had the joy of sitting in that seat and going through, uh, the gauntlet myself, you know, I think back some three years ago when a lot of my answers centered around, um, the mental health, um, and just the direction, uh, that, that was going. Um, and while a number of candidates this evening spoke to the mental health, uh, and advances in the need to address, um, this, I, I do believe that Mr. Irizari gives a, um, very well-rounded approach to mental health, um, you know, his, his experience, and, um, again, I'm, I'm with Mr. Lamah, you know, I'm still sifting through papers and going through names over here, you know, but I can definitely, again, as the person who sat there and, and hearing, you know, his feelings, just echo a lot of what I shared three years ago. Um, it would be a disservice to not publicly give, you know, my, my accolades for the way that he interviewed this evening, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to Jessica Avery. Discussion about Jessica Avery. Sure, Counselor Ariaga.
Um, it's no secret that I definitely, um, and for, is for Jessica Avery, not only is she, um, lifelong Chicagobe resident, her education and her background is just phenomenal. Um, she has been door-to-door in the community. She has met parents where they live. She's had these conversations. She knows, um, her mother is in the school system. Um, I just think that what she brings to the table is just, uh, so much that we need here, um, in Chicagobe, um, and she really does care. Um, she's been, like I said, her whole education here in Chicagobe, and she just has had the firsthand of knowing, um, what the school system has to offer and then what she can do to better it, too.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Sonny Brooks?
Hey, that's, uh, Mr. Nazario. I don't know him personally, but listening to him speak, his qualifications, the fact that he comes into the city prepared with a background in education. Uh, again, our community is getting larger with the Latino population, so to have somebody that speaks Spanish fluently to move in onto this, the school committee with us would be a huge improvement for us, and we'd look forward to having him as a member.
Thank you. Uh, just a point of information, we were talking about Jessica Avery. We had moved on to...
My bad.
That's, that's okay. That's okay. Jessica Avery discussion. Sam Shamsky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, I just want to give accolades to, um, her duties at the Soldiers' Home. My great-grandfather was a, uh, mem- he was a member of the, um, Soldiers' Home back in the early two thousands, and it's someplace that I went when I was a kid. You know, I volunteered with the Tigers there and a few other instances where I've been, and I just want to express accolades for that. I think that's well-deserved. Thank you.
And Sandra Parret?
I, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone who, um, submitted their resumes and participated in the, um, interviews today. We certainly have some extremely qualified individuals. And I, I do, uh, support, uh, Jessica Avery at this time. Uh, this individual has, um, been present at city council meetings as well as school committee meetings in addition to submitting her resume, so I see, uh, a, a great interest here in, uh, in the process.
Thank you, Tim Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also like to, uh, acknowledge Ms. Avery's qualifications and her efforts, particularly with regards to the Hoyoke Soldiers' Home. It's an issue that it's very close to home for, for me and for members of my family. Um, my, my grandfather served in the United States Navy during World War II, and, uh, he was not at the Soldiers' Home, but I, I was, uh, I happened to be related to someone who was very intimately involved with the process of uh, reforming and reshaping the, uh, operations of the Soldiers' Homes across the state and for securing the bond on the House of Representatives side, uh, for constructing this new Soldiers' Home. And, uh, although he didn't get a shovel, his, uh, contributions can't go unnoticed, and, uh, your work in supporting that committee and its findings, uh, led to all of that effort. Um, it, it was, uh, invaluable and indispensable, and I hope we can see somebody like this, uh, on the school committee.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Jay Doubt?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just, you know, I think we'd be remiss if I didn't just bring up, you know, Ms. Avery's homework that she did. She came in with, with numbers, um, you know, talking about statistics, uh, certain percentage of our student population and everything, right? And I think that, um, when we think about the school committee, obviously being, you know, having that connection and, and understanding who it is that you're working with and for, um, is invaluable. Um, and so there's a deep appreciation for, uh, you know, a candidate for, that was uh, putting in the time and effort to do the homework and come in with some numbers to show us, um, that she's capable of listening, uh, to the presentations and, um, just really understanding that, you know, who our popu- our student population is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion about Susan Satella Lopes?
Thank you. Jessica Avery has a solid platform to stand by, and she also would bring a lot of enthusiasm to the job.
Any other discussion about Jessica? Ms. Avery? Seeing none, we'll move on to Terry Tebault. Terry Tebault? Any discussion? Comments? Sam Shamsky?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do happen to, uh, like that she's a political outsider in a sense. I think that'd be a good perspective for a candidate to have while we're coming on to this. I really, that's all I have to say on that. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Don Lamah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other discussions about Terry? Sure. Uh, she's a long day. I'm sorry, Gray Schofield.
Um, yes, uh, I also believe that, um, Terry was talking about, um, the safety and of the students, as many of the other candidates have mentioned, and I think that was a really important point, but her ability to work as a team, she stressed being part of a team, she stressed doing different, um, jobs from leadership to, um, you know, pulling up her sleeves and working as a committee in what's best for the children. Um, we need to all work together and being able to compromise and, and see right, different ways. Um, and I thought it was a very, um, important aspect of being part of the committee to do what's best for the, uh, children's education.
Thank you, Ron Bernard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to second a lot of things that Gray said, so I don't have to repeat it. But a couple of other things I want to add to that. Um, something, but I also liked, I don't know, she also was, uh, she was very involved in the PTO for her school, so she hears some knowledge of what goes on in this. She also worked in food service in the cafeteria at our schools also, so she understands, you know, what goes on in schools in that area, too. So that's a, a good feather in her cap, which I really like. She also was somebody mentioned, too, about somebody coaching, I think Jay coached and a few other ones here that we know. Terry also coached, uh, in youth organizations uh, for a lot of years. So she worked, has experience working with the children, uh, being in the schools also, so I just wanted to add it at, uh, to, uh, what Gray said already.
Thank you. Can I just ask everyone who's joining us remotely to please mute your mics? Appreciate that. We're getting some feedback, and I truly appreciate if you can mute your mics unless you were called upon to speak. At this time, Sandra Parret.
I, I, um, um, Mr. Tebow's, uh, interview added, um, another dimension in terms of with regards to safety as a priority, coming to us from, uh, a different, um, work environment, but recognizing that, you know, safety is a priority in all environments. So she may be able to share with us a a different perspective with regards to safety in our, in our school system, as well as she stated that she was, um, not, not afraid of a challenge, so, um, if we end with Terry, M- Ms. Ms. Tebow being the representative, I, I think we'll do well.
Thank you. Any other discussion about Terry Tebault? Seeing none, we'll move on to Christopher Acevedo. Any discussion about Christopher? Don Lamah?
Sorry, I could echo that for Mr. Acevedo. He has four kids living at home and two adult kids. He, um, he's a manager, he's in a service. He brings a different perspective, a different mindset. He understands negotiation, and he understands union environments. Everybody can't be on one side of the, the coin. You gotta have some back and forth, some controversy at times to get to the best results. So, once again, that's would be one of the reasons why I leaned toward it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam Shamsky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I first want to start off by thanking Mr. Acevedo for his, um, service to our country. And I also want to admire his, uh, discipline skills, then he was very well-organized, and I do have to agree with most of what my colleague or former colleague, um, Don Lamah said. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, over the course of my time on the school committee, uh, as the Ward One representative, I actually got to know Mr. Acevedo's, uh, wife a little bit here, and I can absolutely attest to, uh, the entire family's commitment to the public education system. They've not been hesitant to, to ask any question of me. Uh, they've always made it a point to be informed about what's going on in our school system. They bring the perspective of being parents and, and political outsiders to the, to the table here, and I think that that's honestly really beneficial uh, to this city and to the school committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Gray Schofield.
Um, just to add to what everyone else said, too, the point that he brought up, um, he understands fiscal responsibility was something that, um, I thought should be brought to everyone's attention.
Ron Bernard?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things, uh, I noted, too, um, in Chris's responses tonight. Uh, is that a lot of his responses comes from common sense. A lot of common sense in what he said. You know, um, and, you know, having his experience of his kids going through the Chicagobe schools was very important. And again, thank you for your service. Like, that's important, being a veteran. And, um, one of his answers, I think he said at the end there, one of those couple of questions you had asked, Mayor, was I think the first question. I made a note that, that one of the things that he needs to, uh, I don't have the questions in front of me on, on the other side. Um, but he touched on the discipline issues, uh, that we're having in our schools, which are very important. As being a former teacher, I understand what he's talking about, that, you know, in order to fix all the other issues in our schools, you kind of have to have that discipline and control in your classroom and in the building. Uh, that's kind of one of the top priorities. And so when he touched on that, that, uh, you know, made a difference in my thought there.
All set, thank you. Any other discussion about Chris? Sandra Parret?
So, again, um, Mr. Acevedo, thank you for your service to our country. And also, uh, what impressed me was the fact that he, he mentioned that each one of us is accountable for our actions, and, uh, the students need to learn what their responsibility is in terms of their accountability to their behavior in the classroom. So, um, thank you for that, that insight into, uh, into our schools.
Thank you. Any other discussion about Mr. Acevedo? Thank you. We'll move on to Joel McCullough. Any discussion about Joel? Sure, George Balak here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening. Uh, this is, um, a Herculean process as we're getting into the, uh, late hour of the evening. And, uh, we have many candidates, um, who bring, uh, a lot to the table. And it's unfortunate that we only have one vacant at large. I think we could fill up probably five or six tonight. But, uh, speaking about Mr. McCullough, um, is a former Maryland aide, city counselor, legislative aide, and now an educator with experience working for the Hoyoke Public Schools. Both are central office and a school administrator. Joel brings a wealth of knowledge and familiarity with government operations and educational systems. I had the pleasure of serving with Joel on city council, and I saw Joel uh, really blossom with, uh, many of the city issues and, um, also with education. He has an impressive resume. He's worked hard. Uh, he's got extra degrees. He's working on his PhD. And, um, it, I think he's, he would bring a lot to the table. Um, Joel also served on, uh, zoning committee with me, and uh, Joel was diving some of the issues, and he has an inquisitive mind. And I think if he really was given this opportunity, he would apply himself, and people would feel very confident with his thinking and the fact that, uh, if he if he has the opportunity of filling a seat, a vacant at large, uh, people would say, "You McCullough, you know, that was a good choice." Thank you.
Don Lamah?
Um, I'm not going to go through everything that you went through, Mr. Balak here, but he's, he, I agree with most of what you said. Thank you. Um, he's the only one, in my opinion, to answer the question for the, the way I thought it should. He's the only one, in my opinion, to answer the question for the way I thought it should have been answered. He mentioned that to work with the superintendent, he would need to set goals for the school committee and the superintendent, and hold us all accountable to him. That's something that's missing right now, and I think that's something that would be good for the school committee. So, that's a good issue right there. My only concern with Joel is how long would we keep him? Is, is if he's into education the way he is, it won't be long before he's gone somewhere else. So that's a concern of mine. I don't want to be sitting back here in another month filling the seat again. So, I have to think about that.
All set?
Yes.
Tim Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. McCullough is someone I've known, come to know over at this point, my many years being involved with Chicopee politics, shocking though that may be. I came to know him very, very well over his earlier years on the council and my early forte into the Chicopee political scene. And I've seen Joel grow and adapt over that time in a tremendous way. So much so, that I endorsed his candidacy for state representative to succeed my father. It seems to me, for however many steps forward this applicant takes forward, they can take quite as many back. Over the course of that campaign alone, and I won't go into all of it, there were a couple of things that were done that frankly I, and many others, were not very appreciative of. Inclusive of one incident where I had to ask, where I had to explore the possibility of retaining a lawyer in order to get TV ads taken down for which I had revoked my consent to appear on. Just as well, over the course of the next municipal election cycle, this particular applicant in the run-up to the election, and President Laflamme, I don't mean to mention you in here, it just so happens that you are involved in it. This particular applicant sent out mailers saying, "Vote Frank and Joel", in clear violation of camp, of state campaign finance laws and ethics laws. And something that I cannot openly support at this time, and for among other personal reasons, which I won't explain here. I, I will acknowledge that the candidate's resume is absolutely phenomenal, and that his achievements are, at this time, something to be admired and what, what all of us should hope to do over our time in public office. But they are equally as tarnished by the bad actions and the bad deeds that were done to people around them, which had actively offered support, and which had caused those people to rescind their support over time. So I'm not in favor of this applicant moving forward, and I hope that the committee and the council jointly can understand those problems and can find reason in them and find reason to vote with me as I will be for other candidates this evening. Thank you.
Any other discussion about Joel McCullough? Want to say something about Joel McCullough?
Yeah, if, I'm just gonna, I'm here tonight, I just want to comment on one thing was just said, with, that it pertained to me with Joel McCullough. Joel McCullough did it all on his own. I didn't ask him to do that, so I just want to clarify that for my record, please, because I, it's not that we were putting a bullet together. Thank you.
And I, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, I don't mean to have, to have implied that President Laflamme was involved in any of that. I, I do sincerely apologize. I was simply stating that that mailer was sent out, and I, Frank, again, I do apologize.
Thank you. You may. You said, "If I may." Sandra Perret.
Just, um, Joel has always struck me as someone who's a hard worker, and starts from, I think, when he was promoting himself or as an announcer for the Boston Red Sox, and then continued to, to do different things, or I think you might have applied for that position, I can't recall, but he was always trying to do better for himself and, and educate himself, and he just comes across as a hard worker. So, just like to share that.
Are you all set?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Ron Bernard, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just, I think Joel offers a lot of experience, his former time on city council, he kind of knows how, him, like you said, city politics works, and, you know, school committee is no, is, is part of that. So I think that's very valuable experience there. And I like the experience he has working at Dean Vocational School in Hoyouk, a lot of positions he's held there. So he knows the kind of ins and outs of what goes on in his school, which is very valuable experience, being on a school committee.
Thank you, Ron. Any other discussion about the candidate Joel McCullough? Seeing none, we'll move on to Mark McCarthy. Discussion about the candidate Mark McCarthy. Sam Shumsky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do, I do want to point out something that I really admired and liked about what Mr. McCarthy said, and that was about how politics shape education, his concerns with that. I too share a lot of concerns about how government and politics shape the way our education system works. I believe that in some ways it has failed millions of students every year, and it's nothing against staff or teachers, they're incredible, but I do think, you know, departments like DESI and the Department of Education do shape curriculum in a way, and policies that are maybe not, are not in the best interest of the students, so I do want to share that and my admiration for that. And I also want to express how he was the vice president of his PTO. I think that was a very admirable quality and trait, and I wish him, I wish him best luck. Thank you.
Discussions about Mr. McCarthy? Sandra Perret.
I think after listening to Mr. McCarthy, as well as seeing his resume, he brings to us a more global approach to education, having been an instructor in, in China, probably can see different aspects of education, and compare it to what we're doing here in, in our society as well, in our small, in our small unit. I think it's, it's important to, to have that, that larger global perspective, because our students are going out into the world once graduating, and this can be a key component to them in their positions, whether it's in education or in a, in a employment position as well, so it's, it's important to be more aware of the, the world around them beyond our Chicopee as the epicenter of the universe, that there's more to it than that.
Thank you. Any other discussion about, again, Mr. McCarthy? Yeah, don't be sorry, Mary Beth Piniac Costello. You don't have to be sorry.
I, I was impressed with Mr. McCarthy's resume. I do believe he has a PhD. And the fact that he has that international educational experience that he can bring to our city is quite unique. I've been to Guanzo. I've seen their schools. Didn't go in, was walking by the schools with a baby stroller. But it's a lot different, and that kind of experience is something that would benefit our district. I thank Mr. McCarthy for taking the time and the fact that he is a parent with a child in our district is, shows that he's vested in public education. And thank you for your service as a teacher in Guanzo. Thank you.
Any other discussion on Mark McCarthy? Yes, Susan Satella Loebz.
Mr. McCarthy had a very good interview.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I'm sorry, I didn't see your hands, Sue. Counselor Goff.
I was very impressed with Mr. McCarthy's resume, the fact that he has a PhD, and one thing I heard tonight was literature was very important, and he has the PhD in, in, in literature. Today we have diverse learners. It's not like before, their socio, socioeconomic diversity, there, we have a diverse demographics. It's not like it used to be. We can't keep going with the same old, same old. We need something new. Mr. McCarthy brought that forward, that he has new ideas, he has the background behind him to support those ideas. I just think, like I said, with the demographics that we have today, we need to start thinking different. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion again about Mark McCarthy? So before we move on with this process, I want to take a moment to thank the, both the solicitor for the school district and also the city council, or I'm sorry, the council for the city council, who worked with my chief of staff on this process, and making sure that it was very thorough and transparent, and before we move forward, there's been an issue that needs to be addressed, so I'm going to ask the, the council or this convention as a whole for a two-minute recess. So I get a motion, have a motion for a two-minute recess?
Motion for a two-minute.
We'll take a roll call.
President Laflamme? Wagner?
Yes.
Zegarowski?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Yes.
Valkeer?
Yes.
Shumsky?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Piniac Costello?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Satella Loebz?
Yes.
Barcello?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Perret?
Yes.
Schofield? Schofield?
Yes.
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Ma?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Twenty-two, yes.
Motion carries. We're, we'll be back in two minutes. We'll just let everyone settle back into their seats. I'd like to entertain a motion to return to the regular session.
Motion to return to the regular session.
I have a motion to return to regular session. You guys are quick, so I have a motion from Sam Shumsky to return, and seconded by the president, city council Frank Laflamme. Roll call, please.
President Laflamme? Roy? Wagner?
Yes.
Zegarowski? Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooke?
Yes.
Ah?
Yes.
Valkeer?
Yes.
Rampitz?
Yes.
Shumsky?
Yes.
Labree?
Yes.
Piniac Costello?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Satella Loebz?
Yes.
Barcello?
Yes.
Stout?
Yes.
Perret?
Yes.
Schofield?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lama? Gerard?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Twenty-two, yes.
Motion carries. So it's been brought to my attention, that's what's transpired so far, is we've narrowed it down to seven candidates, and we've had that discussion. But during the vote in the original phase of this, of this process, or, or first step to make it to the second round, one of the candidates, James Tannhauser, had received 11 votes. Those 11 votes, during that, a vote of the, again, the full convention, one person had stepped away and was out of chair. So because that happened, that created a majority of not needing 12, but 11. So we have to add the eighth candidate, James Tannhauser, into our discussion as he is now forwarded into the second round. Because of one of the city counselors had removed himself from chair, a change of discussion with the attorneys has changed the, the, the majority vote from 12 to 11, just for clarity. So James Tannhauser has moved into the second round. He is not here tonight, but we will now open it up for discussion about James Tannhauser. Tim Wagner.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Tannhauser is somebody who I got to know briefly, again, or in my early forte in the Chicopee elected politics, and somebody who I've talked briefly with over my time on the school committee, and who I increasingly, more and more, seem to find myself on the same side of policy positions as him, so he brings a wealth of experience, having served on the board in the past. And I think he should be given all due consideration in regards to being able to serve on this board in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion about James Tannhauser? Don Lemoff.
Sorry. I too worked with James when he was on the board, and he was a dedicated member that came to the meetings and spoke his mind and worked hard, visited the schools, so forth and so on. Anything you would expect from a good school committee member. Thank you.
Any other discussion about James Tannhauser? Sandra Perret.
I concur with what has been said. He was an active member of the school committee and did not hesitate to share a difference of opinion to get to a better outcome.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So that's going to conclude our discussion phase of this process. At this point, I just want to be clear of the next step, and that's the voting. First, let me just say this. I personally am excited that we have 13 people who are interested in serving and filling the shoes of a legacy of Chet Satella. Chet, we wish you the best in your retirement, and, and if you're watching, you're seeing the interest to fill your seat. It's just incredible. Right now, that was narrowed down to 11. We have eight highly qualified professionals that, again, I can just get this sense of passion and commitment to not just our students' success, but also to our school districts from all of you. And I think that's really important to mention. In this next phase, I'm going to be asking members of this convention to vote for just one person. You will be actually saying that person's name, and if one of the eight candidates that are, have made it to the second round achieves 13 votes, they will assume the seat in the role upon getting sworn in by the city clerk, and also by signing the book, and then would, taking the oath, and and then could proceed to fill out, fulfill the rest of Chet Satella's term as at-large school committee member. So at this time, does anyone have any questions before we start this voting process? Again, you're going to be asked to vote for one of the eight candidates. I can read them if you'd like to know their names for clarity. I think everyone's comfortable with their, with their vote, and moving forward, I just want to share one thought with you. That if a candidate, if we don't get 13 votes, in this case, it's going to be 12 votes, right, because we have 22? And we still need 13?
13.
13. Okay. Okay. So what we'll do is we'll narrow it down based on the top three if we don't get 13 votes, and then we'll continue the process over. So we're going to start with a roll. Dr. Arndt, you have a question?
Is there any way we could do a lottery to, to draw names out to see who goes first?
No, we're voting for just your pick. You're voting for your candidate. We're taking one vote. So if one of these eight candidates receives 13 votes, they will move on to serve as the representative of the at-large school seat. If that doesn't happen, we'll narrow it down to three, with the top three. So we're going to be asking you for right now to, again, there's a, a really amazing group of professionals here that we have to choose from. There's eight. It's not an easy decision for me, but we all have to narrow it down to one candidate right now, and I'm going to ask you to cast your vote for your candidate that can best fulfill the needs of our school committee as an at-large representative. Ready, Clerk Rattell?
I am. President Laflamme? Roy?
Mark McCarthy.
Wagner?
Jessica Avery.
Zegarowski?
Jason Fay.
Ariaga?
Jessica Avery.
Brooks?
Jason Fay.
Goff?
Mark McCarthy.
Valkir?
Joel McCollum.
Rampitz?
Chris.
Zito?
Chris Abecito was his vote.
Chomsky?
Um, Mike McCarthy.
Mark?
Mark McCarthy.
Mark.
My apologies.
Labrie?
Jason Fay.
Penny Acostello?
Mark McCarthy.
Mayor View?
Jason Fay.
Satella-Lopes?
McCarthy.
Barcello? Tannhauser? Stout?
Omar Irazari.
Parret?
Mark McCarthy.
Schofield?
Terry Tebow.
Brooks?
Jason Fay.
Lama? June Tannhauser. Gerard?
Jason Fay.
Bernard?
Terry Tebow.
Okay, so we've got two, three, four, five, six for Fay. Irazari, one. Avery, two. Theobald, two. Acevito, one. McAuliffe, two. McCarthy. Five. Tannhauser, two.
So just for clarity, the candidate that received the lowest vote total is who?
Acevito.
Acevito, so?
And Irazari.
Are both tied for?
Well, actually, the way the rules, you might want to get a?
So, so, so I think we're removing?
For this round, we're moving the, the top three and ties. And we have one at six, another at, I had at six, but five or six, and then?
Just a point of information, attorney, I think I'm reading this as the, again, the way this has been explained to me is that if no candidate secures thirteen votes, we will then move forward uh, by eliminating, uh, the remaining candidates move forward by removing the, the least vote getter, right? The candidate with the fewest votes?
It's the paragraph just above that, Mayor.
If a candidate doesn't secure thirteen, the top three will advance to the next round. So the top three, who are they?
And ties, so everyone with two will also move forward.
Okay, so Fay had six, McCarthy had five, they move forward, and then there are three with two. They would be Avery, Theobald, and Tannhauser.
So again?
Uh, sorry, McAuliffe, sorry. Uh, Avery, Theobald, and McAuliffe, and Tannhauser. There's four with two.
So we have Fay and McCarthy?
Fay, Fay has six and McCarthy has five, and then there's four with two, so Avery, Theobald, McAuliffe, and Tannhauser. So really, all we're getting rid of is Irazari and Acevito.
Yes, and I want to say thank you for your interest. So now we're going to move forward again with another vote, and that's limiting it down to five potential candidates for the school committee at large. And again, that's Jason Fay, Mark McCarthy, Jessica Avery, Terry Tebow, and James Tannhauser. Once you've all decided who your vote is, you are encouraged to vote for just one. Oh, I'm sorry, and Joel McCullough.
Yep.
Let me, let me repeat that. One, two, three, four, five, six. We're narrowing it, sorry, Joel, we're narrowing it down to six. We're narrowing it down to six, and again, I'll read them. It's Jason Fay, Mark McCarthy, Jessica Avery, Terry Tebow, James Tannhauser, and Joel McCullough. Please cast your vote for one. And we'll take a roll call.
Okay. Ready?
Ready.
President Laflamme? Roy?
Mark McCarthy.
Wagner?
McCarthy.
Zegarowski?
Jason Fay.
Ariaga?
Jessica Avery.
Brooks?
Jason Fay.
Goff?
McCarthy.
Valkir?
Joel McCollum.
Rampitz?
Jason Fay.
Chomsky?
Mark McCarthy.
Labrie?
Jason Fay.
Penny Acostello?
Mark McCarthy.
Mayor View?
Jason Fay.
Satella-Lopes?
Mark McCarthy.
Barcello?
Jason Fay.
Stout?
Mark McCarthy.
Parret?
Mark McCarthy.
Schofield?
Terry Tebow.
Brooks?
Jason Fay.
Lama?
Joel McCarthy, I mean, Joel McCullough.
Gerard?
Jason Fay.
Bernard?
Terry Tebow.
Okay, for Fay, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight for Fay. Avery, I've got one. Theobald, I've got two. Joel McCullough, I've got three. McCarthy, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight for McCarthy.
He's got the most impressive resume.
That's it. Nothing for Tannhauser.
So James, James Tannhauser is going to be removed? And we're going to continue again.
So you've got?
So the, the process is what it is, and now we're going to move forward with the one, two, three, four, five candidates, correct?
Just the low?
Just the low.
Just the one low.
So you want to read who's left?
Yep, we have Jason Fay with eight. Um, Jessica Avery is left. She's got one. Theobald's got two. Joel McCullough with three, and McCarthy with eight. So all of them are still in. There's out with zero. Fay, Avery, Theobald, McAuliffe, and McCarthy.
Everyone comfortable to move forward?
Yeah. Another sheet.
I can't hear you. You can speak into the mic and I'll answer your question.
Uh, could you name the remaining people loudly so we can all hear?
You just invited them. Want them to do it again?
I couldn't hear all the names he said. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure. We have Jason Fay, Jessica Avery, Mark McCarthy, Terry Tebow, and Joel McCullough. Correct? Clerk Rattell?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
All right.
Ready?
Yep.
Again, uh, I encourage you to vote for just one, and we're ready to start, and we'll take a roll call.
President Laflamme? Roy?
Mark McCarthy.
Wagner?
McCarthy.
Zegarowski?
Jason Fay.
Ariaga?
Jessica Avery.
Brooks?
Jason Fay.
Goff?
McCarthy.
Valkir?
Joel McCollum.
Rampitz?
Jason Fay.
Chomsky?
Mark McCarthy.
Labrie?
Jason Fay.
Penny Acostello?
Mark McCarthy.
Mayor View?
Jason Fay.
Satella-Lopes?
Mark McCarthy.
Barcello?
Jason Fay.
Stout?
Mark McCarthy.
Parret?
Mark McCarthy.
Schofield?
Joel McCullough.
Brooks?
Jason Fay.
Lama?
Joel McCullough.
Gerard?
Jason.
Bernard? Okay. Eight for Fay. One for Avery. One for Theobald. Three for McAuliffe. Sorry. Four for McAuliffe. And one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight for McCarthy.
That drops Avery and Tebow.
Avery and Tebow are removed. Again, thank you for your consideration. And we'll move on. We have three left. Again, that's Jason Fay. Mayor, one of the applicants has their hand up. That's okay. I see it, but we're not taking public input at this time. We're going to continue with the process. We're not open for public input right now. Okay, can I accept that as a? We're not open for that to follow with Robert Wilson's order. We have a process. The process has been defined. We're going to move forward. And again, we've narrowed it down to, uh, Jason Fay, Mark McCarthy, and Joel McCullough.
Correct.
Everyone comfortable with, ready to cast your vote. I encourage you to vote for one. And we'll start the roll.
President Laflamme?
Jason Fay.
Roy? Mark McCarthy. Wagner?
McCarthy.
Zegarowski?
Jason Fay.
Ariaga?
Mark McCarthy.
Brooks?
Jason Fay.
Goff?
Mark McCarthy.
Valkir?
Joel McCollum.
Rampitz?
Jason Fay.
Chomsky?
Mark McCarthy.
Labrie?
Jason Fay.
Penny Acostello?
Mark McCarthy.
Mayor View?
Jason Fay.
Satella-Lopes?
Mark McCarthy.
Barcello? Stout?
Mark McCarthy.
Parret?
Mark McCarthy.
Schofield?
Mark McCarthy.
Lama? Gerard?
Jason Fay.
Bernard?
Mark McCarthy.
Nine for Fay. McAuliffe, one. And McCarthy, one, two, three. Twelve for McCarthy.
Twelve. So that will reduce it down to two candidates. The candidates are Mark McCarthy, Jason Fay and Mark McCarthy, or uh, Mark McCarthy and Jason Fay. So I encourage you now to vote for one. Everyone comfortable and ready? Take a roll call.
President Laflamme? Roy?
Mark McCarthy.
Wagner?
McCarthy.
Zegarowski?
Jason Fay.
Ariaga?
Mark McCarthy.
Brooks?
Jason Fay.
Mark McCarthy.
Valkir?
Jason Fay.
Rampitz?
Jason Fay.
Chomsky?
Mark McCarthy.
Labrie?
Jason Fay.
Penny Acostello?
Mark McCarthy.
Mayor View?
Jason Fay.
Satella-Lopes?
Mark McCarthy.
Barcello?
Jason Fay.
Stout?
Mark McCarthy.
Parret?
Mark McCarthy.
Schofield?
Mark McCarthy.
Brooks?
Jason Fay.
Lama?
Mark McCarthy.
Gerard?
Jason Fay.
Bernard?
Mark McCarthy.
Ten for Fay. And twelve for McCarthy.
So now, since there's only two candidates remaining, the votes will continue until one of them achieves thirteen votes. So we're ready to take a, we want to uh, again, possibly reconsider their vote, or we're going to vote again? Yes, a point of information, friend?
Again, please?
It was, it was twelve votes for Mark McCarthy and ten for Jason Fay, correct?
Correct.
Everyone comfortable and ready. I encourage you to vote for one, and we're going to start over. Clerk Rattell, please take a roll.
President Laflamme? Roy?
Mark McCarthy.
Wagner?
Mark McCarthy.
Zegarowski?
Jason Fay.
Ariaga?
Mark McCarthy.
Brooks?
Jason Fay.
Goff?
Goff?
Valkir?
Mark McCarthy.
Rampitz?
Mark McCarthy.
Chomsky?
Mark McCarthy.
Labrie?
Jason Fay.
Penny Acostello?
Mark McCarthy.
Mayor View?
Jason Fay.
Satella-Lopes?
Mark McCarthy.
Barcello?
Jason Fay.
Stout?
Mark McCarthy.
Parret?
Mark McCarthy.
Schofield?
Mark McCarthy.
Brooks?
Jason Fay.
Lama?
Mark McCarthy.
Gerard?
Jason Fay.
Bernard?
Mark McCarthy.
Eight for Fay. Fourteen for McCarthy.
I would like to recognize Mark McCarthy as the new school committee at large. Congratulations. At this time, the new school committee member, I would like you to come on up and we'd like to encourage you to take your, now if you'd like, and also sign our book and entertain a motion. I have a motion made and seconded to adjourn the special meeting. We'll take a roll call.
President Laflamme? Roy?
Yes.
Wagner?
Yes.
Zegarowski? Ariaga?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Goff?
Yes.
Valkir?
Yes.
Rampitz?
Yes.
Chomsky? Labrie?
Yes.
Penny Acostello? Mayor View?
Yes.
Satella-Lopes? Barcello?
Yes.
Yes. Stout?
Yes.
Parret?
Yes.
Schofield?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lama?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Bernard? Twenty-two, yes.
Motion carries for adjourn. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Well done.